Good evening, Garen City. I'd like to call the order. City Council meeting for Monday, July 7, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dole.
Here.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Here.
We have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, July 7 council meeting agenda as presented.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Any discussion from table? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have no recognitions, no state or county officials. We do have a presentation tonight for Safe Streets for All. Our community development director, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wanted to just do a little introduction of the two ladies from McKenna Associates that are going to give a presentation regarding the Safe Streets and Roads for All. If you can recall, last year, we wrote a consortium grant with Westland Garden City, Inglester and Wayne to look at kind of the inner ring western suburb road network and look at where potential areas for safety improvements could occur. And it's been about a year, and we want to give an update regarding the project and the grant that has been done so far. So Ashley Jankowski and Laura Haw are here from McKenna Associates, and they're going to give you a presentation on the progress for our grant, okay?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor. We have a presentation. If that could be pulled up, please. Thank you. As Matt introduced, I am Laura Haw. I am the project director, and with me is Ashley Jankowski, project planner. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update to the Safe Streets for All grant. Next slide. Tonight, we would like to just kind of cover what the Safe Streets for All grant encompasses, what the objectives are, the data that we've looked at so far, and the culmination of that data that led to the drafting of the action plan, which there is a full copy before you this evening, as well as your individual action plan for the city. So, next slide. The Safe Streets for All is a federally funded program that was made possible through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, and this provides funding for local communities to ensure that all roadways are safer, not just for motorists, but for pedestrians and cyclists and those that use transit. So back in 2023, the city of Wayne approached McKenna about applying with the federal grant and preparing that grant on behalf of the city of Wayne. And as we got into it, we quickly realized that this application would be much stronger with other surrounding communities, and that that approach was really necessary because the road segments and intersections in the city of Wayne impact what happens in Inglester, impact what happens in Garden City, impacts what happens in Wesleyan. They're all interconnected. So the four communities, of course, branded together, submitted this grant application, which was awarded. And last summer, the project really kicked off. And it is an 18-month project, so we're on schedule. Next slide. So the safe systems approach recognizes that humans make mistakes and that there will be accidents on our roadways, but the goal is to minimize the likelihood of those accidents and then to minimize the impact of accidents when they do occur. So those are the two primary functions. And looking at ways to make and design roads safer for, again, the motorist, but also pedestrian, cyclists, transit users, any users of all ages and abilities. Next slide. So again, this four community partnership was really necessary in order to think holistically about the roadways in this area, especially, you know, there are some major corridors that the community share in major intersections. So Michigan Ave, Ford Road, Middle Belt, Van Born are just a couple. And then also by sharing the smart transit system, that's also very interconnected between the communities. Next slide. And so to spearhead this grant effort, there was a working committee established with representatives from each of the four communities. So it's been a pleasure working with Matt and your administration on this grant. Other representatives from the different communities included members of their Park and Rec Department, Public Safety, Economic Development Teams. So it really brought a lot of different perspectives to the steering committee. And this working group met monthly and largely contributed to the drafting of this plan. Next slide. And here's just a broad overview of the timeline, starting from summer 2024. We are in the draft plan section right now and looking to have the draft available for the rest of the summer. And then this fall, the goal is that each community, each city council will be adopting the plan individually. Next slide. All right, so taking a look at the data, how did we get to the draft plan? Next slide. The first was looking at the quantitative crash data from MDOT. And this is a five-year look back, so since 2019. Where are the most severe crashes? Where are they located in the four communities? And also where are the more minor crashes? So you can see that heat map that's displayed on the presentation where those crashes have occurred over the past five years. And next slide. When you put that on the corridors and the intersections, the result is this high injury network with the red segments and intersections being the most crucial areas for safety improvements. And I think this map is really telling because it shows that a lot of these segments are either on community boundaries or the intersections are shared among different communities. And that is really important to have this collaborative effort in eventually making improvements to these intersections and segments. Next slide. So in addition to the specific crash data, we also took a look at some other metrics to see where investment should be prioritized to make the biggest impact on resident lives. So we compared the transportation network through a couple of different lenses. We looked at income levels, persistent poverty, access to vehicles. So if it's no, zero vehicles per household or one vehicle per household, disabilities, the senior population, where those census tracts are more heavily located, and then also racial minorities. Next slide. So this is just a sampling of some of those maps that show that socioeconomic and demographic data. And Garden City maybe doesn't have the highest concentration of some of these, but it still is important to consider when thinking about the local priorities. Next slide. The third thing that we looked at were existing plans. So we looked at Garden City's master plan, Park and Rec Plan, DDA Plan, but also regional and the state of Michigan plans and what those transportation objectives and goals and policies are. And that helped frame the objectives of this plan as well. Next slide. Then we also did a lot of qualitative data to kind of verify what we saw in the numbers. Next slide. So there was a very public-facing component of this project. There's a dedicated project website. It's still available if you'd like to go to it. And there was an online survey that was conducted that allowed people to make comments on specific roadways, segments in their neighborhood, whatever it may be, that were important to them, either areas of concern or areas, something that was working well in the community, a place that they liked or felt safe. In total, there was 239 comments. And specific to Garden City, some of the things that we heard were residents were prioritizing traffic calming. They were prioritizing formal bike paths and lanes and dedicated sidewalk areas, so improved streetscapes. They also were noting a desire for increased pedestrian safety infrastructure, so better signalizations at intersections, better signage, and more high-visibility crosswalks. Next slide. In addition to the kind of community-wide engagement, there were these transit ground truthing tours that we did in each community, and these were in the fall of last year. And they were either walking tours or driving tours, either by bus or a personal vehicle or a combination of both. But there were unique routes in each of the four communities that different representatives went on. And they were designed to actually feel and see how the different corridors and intersections felt from a pedestrian point of view or from a driver. And these helped validate what the numbers were showing. And out of this, we really saw some shared priorities among the four communities, namely safe routes to school, making sure that children have safe and accessible pathways to and from school from their neighborhoods. We also heard consistently improved access to transit and improvement of transit locations and stops, greater accessibility across the board, so more ADA compliance, and just a demand for greater pedestrian infrastructure and visibility for those walking. Next slide. And then lastly, we engaged with your local professionals. So this would be your engineering department or engineering consultants, members and representatives from the Department of Public Works and Public Safety, the Police and Fire Department, and other local leaders. And we had focus groups in each of the four communities to kind of determine what the local priorities were and what were some projects that were in the works. And then we also had a session with Wayne County to bring them up to speed on these projects and this plan and make sure that they were on board as it will be implemented in the future. And next slide. So all of that data, both the quantitative and the qualitative, led us to produce the draft plan, which Ashley is going to discuss.
Thanks, everyone, for your time. So following all of that quantitative and qualitative data gathering, the community listening, we worked with our engineering team to develop a series of targeted recommendations for specific corridors in your community and across the four partnering communities to try to get at some of the most high-impact actions that we could take in the years to come. Next slide. And so in addition to thinking about, you know, what are some of the projects or initiatives that we could take on that address the high injury network, address some of those high-crash locations, we also assessed every single recommendation across some other values that we held true throughout the project, and that is equity and access, making sure that all of our recommendations are channeled towards community members who need them most, responding to both qualitative and quantitative data, making sure that projects are data-driven, but also that community priorities are represented and folks can see themselves in that plan, considering a variety of travel modes. So as Laura mentioned, not just driving, but thinking about pedestrians, thinking about bikers and public transit users, and also contributing meaningfully to the work that your community is already doing. We know just from working with Matt, all of the incredible work that's going on with sidewalks planning and other community and mobility development efforts. And so we want to be sure that we're building on top of that and not creating something completely separate. And so, next slide. We were left with a series of recommendations for each city, which were reviewed and prioritized by our working group and technical experts in each of the communities. And these are across, you know, behavioral interventions, infrastructural or design interventions, operational improvements, policy and enforcement base, really trying to be holistic as we think about the types of actions that could get at solving these problems across, in the short, medium, and long term. Next slide. What you'll notice, actually, it's the colorful chart in front of you, that's the Garden City's action plan itself. And you'll see a wide range of columns there that tell you exactly where the recommendations are, whether it aligns with the high injury network, whether it aligns with those equity components, who might be a good partner for this, and the estimated timeline. And again, we want to offer a range of options for specific corridors to ensure that, you know, the city can be opportunistic when certain grant opportunities come or when, you know, certain partnerships become strategically available, that the city is ready with this action plan to get right into it. And importantly, across, you know, we have these action plans for all four cities. Across all of the action plans, we do have these individual corridors in each city that we want you to target, but we also want to think about these partnership opportunities. So beyond just creating this plan, we want to make sure that these cities continue to work together, like for ensuring safe routes to schools and thinking about how can we make crosswalk improvements, traffic signal improvements, signage improvements near schools. And you can see in this map, we've mapped all of the, you know, educational institutions in this four-city area. There's a quarter-mile buffer around them, and we can start seeing, okay, where are the opportunities to really make sure that kids are being able to get to school safely on foot or on wheels, and where are the opportunities to partner across city boundaries? Next slide. Another opportunity that we saw, as Laura mentioned, is to work with other communities to improve smart bus stops, so making them more comfortable and also safer to get on and off of the bus. Next slide. And the third opportunity for collaboration that I'll mention are these cross-city connections to parks and natural assets. All of these four communities have really great recreational and parks resources, and we want to make sure that folks have an ability to get there safely. And there's a really a strong, we think there's a strong opportunity to pursue those types of greenways or trailways with these four communities more broadly. Next slide. And so that's the action plan. We have the Unified Safety Action Plan, which documents all of our progress and documents, you know, all of this data for these four communities. We have these action plans, the colorful tables in front of you, that offer some of those targeted recommendations. And I'll quickly walk through the next steps that we have for you today. Next slide. So in terms of the plan itself, we really want to hear your feedback on the draft plan throughout the rest of summer 2025. We'll have this plan posted on the project website so that the public can weigh in. Our goal will be to integrate that feedback, adopt the plan in each of the four cities by end of September this year. And then we really want to get to work. We want to start applying for implementation dollars, either as individual cities or in partnership. And the other handout that you'll see, the gray one, is research that we've done to identify concrete funding sources that this action plan unlocks for the city of Garden City and also these four partnering cities. And so their local, regional, and federal funding sources included in that is the Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, which is the natural next step for this project. But again, we want the city to be really opportunistic and to think of their action plans as really dynamic and to be able to, you know, fit into the funding pockets that you see. And we'd be willing to, you know, help talk through any of those grants that are deemed feasible or assist with any of that. Next slide. And this is a list of those funding sources here. I will note that we have found that sometimes it is more beneficial for a community to partner with other neighboring cities, and that makes these grant applications more competitive. So think about those grants in the context of your action plan, but also think about, you know, what it might be like to partner with these four collaborating cities moving forward as well. Next slide. And this, we have some diagrams here around pursuing funding that you have in your slide deck in case that's useful. And you can proceed to the next and the next. Thanks, and we welcome all of your questions. Thanks so much for your time and for your support of this project. And just special thanks to Matt Miller, who's been really instrumental in this working group and in helping this project move forward.
Thank you. I want to thank you. I know the last couple of conferences I've gone to, they've really stressed collaborating with other cities and other groups and that to collaborate on getting a better method of funding. So I do appreciate that, and I know Mr. Miller puts in a lot of work with that. So thank you both for a great presentation. Council, do you have any questions or comments for the young ladies here?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight is some community events. Mr. Miller.
Hi. Good evening again. I wanted to, first of all, I think I've got a couple slides downstairs I wanted to have them show you. One is, there we go, Lucky Squirrel is coming up next Saturday, so that is July 19. And I wanted you to remember that you can still register for your bag. So I have a handy-dandy shopping bag with Zeffy the Squirrel on it. I wanted to encourage you, we still have bags left, to register for the bag for the shopping days. And of course, the goal always at the Lucky Squirrel is to fill the bag when you're shopping. So again, if you want to scan the QR code, and you can download all that information on how to get the bag, we'll have the bags there at the registration table. And that is, of course, next Saturday, July 19, for the Lucky Squirrel coming up, okay? And then I have one more community announcement. And since kind of Laura and Ashley kind of segued into this, but I'm kind of declaring this summer as the summer of sidewalks. And so part of that is, we were able to, part of the grant funding, I was able to get some kind of marketing information or community outreach information. And we got three pieces of sidewalk chalk that you can actually come into City Hall and pick up for your kids to show us their artwork. And there's an email to email your photographs to. And also you can do a hashtag on Facebook, hashtag GC Sidewalk, to kind of portray the budding artists we have in the community. Part of the sidewalk grant program, of course, is to create kind of a safe place for kids to walk. Also, kids can play there. It's creating a kind of a defined area of your yard, the street space, and again, just kind of encouraging kids to go out and play and take advantage of the new sidewalk and the grid system that's going in. So again, come into City Hall at any time. They're at the clerk's office, and there's a sticker on there, and it even shows you where you can email your artwork for the kids. And to, of course, encourage kids to play, encourage kids to play in a safe space, too, okay? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. I was going to do that. Okay, we can do it. Come on up, Jackie. Garen City Business Alliance President, Ms. Jackie Peridore.
Well, hello there. Sorry for the confusion. So Thursday, a week from Thursday, is Music in the Park. So you're going to come to Music in the Park on Thursday and the Lucky Squirrel on Saturday. So that's how this is going to work. Music in the Park, this time, we're having the large band, which is called Magic Bus. So we're encouraging everyone to bring their inner hippie. All right? Because it's a Woodstock presentation. So there'll be food trucks and games. Parks and Rec has cornhole and other things. We have vendors, and of course, the band. So because it's a larger band with a larger following, you want to come early, get your spot, and enjoy it. So it's starting at 4 and ending at 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No petitions, communications, no public hearings. Item 11 is the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A1 through 4.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Discussion from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Action items, we have intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight before you, it was an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Garden City and Dearborn Heights to expand our Family Resource Center to provide youth assistance programming to referrals from the city of Dearborn Heights. This is an expansion of what we, we really have a gem of a program here in Garden City that allows at-risk youth to be referred to our Family Resource Center to engage in activities to sort of reduce their risk of issues in the future by doing programming here instead of being sent to the county for youth assistance there. It's been a gem in our community, and it's been part of us for a long time, such that Dearborn Heights is very interested in us providing that resource for them. The benefit for us is this is all grant-funded. We're currently awarded the first contract grant through the Wayne County Youth Assistance and allows us to take full advantage of the monies that are available to us there and benefit the youth in their community. This agreement, we'll have to go in front of their council in a future meeting, but it's terminable by both parties with cause, and it's also terminable if we lost the funding for it. So the risk to Garden City is low, but the benefit is high for both communities, both in our sense that we could take full advantage of the grant and that they can benefit from what we have as a great program in Garden City.
Thank you. Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached agreement between the city of Garden City and the city of Dearborn Heights establishing a satellite Family Resource Center office for the administration of youth assistance services.
Support. Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I just have one question. So it's us going to Dearborn Heights, their kids aren't coming to Radcliffe.
Not, the primary will be in Dearborn Heights. Not to say that there won't be activities and programming at our Radcliffe Center. I think that'll continue to be used. It'll be used by both referrals, but at the same time, the primary Dearborn Heights activities will start at the satellite there and then, you know, use our facilities as needed.
Do we already have the satellite picked out?
Yes, it'll be inside the, their sort of Justice Hall, which houses their police department and their court system.
Okay, that's my only question.
Okay, further questions, comments? Councilmember Dole.
Just, the grant we get now that covers Garden City, is there an increase to that grant to pull Dearborn Heights in, or do we have enough in that grant to cover them now?
We've always had enough in that grant when it's awarded. So this just allows us to take full advantage of that grant.
Okay, so it is 150% grant-funded.
And I like the term 150, yes, absolutely. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Further comments?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout-out to Sean. I know he's been working on this for a while, and he does a great job over there with the FRC, so we appreciate all his time.
Absolutely, he's doing great work over there.
I concur.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have no other business. Item 13 is public comment. You have three minutes to speak on non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I have a few issues. I received, as many residents did, our tax bill, and I thought it was interesting to read the back of it since the residents are made aware of what they voted on and why our taxes are so high. It was, I don't remember the exact wording, but it was like, "City voted on" or something like that. But I also found it interesting that the city forgot to put in what they charged us, what they stuck us with, like the 1.5 mil increase. We didn't vote for that, but we got charged for that. Same thing with water bills. We didn't vote for the increase. We didn't vote for when you added the fixed charges, which added, you know, 150-some dollars to everybody's bill every year. And then, a couple of meetings ago, you told us how we could cut back on our water usage since the water rates were going up. The water rate itself is over 50%, which I thought was a little excessive. And, but you told us how we could cut back, not take as many showers, not do laundry, et cetera, et cetera. But I didn't hear you say anything to the ex-city manager about not spending so much that got us in this hole, but it's all right for you to tell us how to save water for something that we had no choice in? We didn't spend the $9 million, and I think $9 million is quite excessive over, what, seven years since we got that? Also, I lost my train of thought there. Isn't the 50% increase in water rates, and a lady last meeting mentioned to it about the excessive cost and the legality of it, but that's like price gouging, what you're doing to the city? And I understand there were different solutions to this that were entered, but you still chose the one that probably costs the most for all of us, but you keep saying it's the best in the long run. Well, that's price gouging. I'm sorry, I don't care how else we look at it. If you would have added a fee to the fixed fee, that would have been different. But this is for actual usage of water. So, for 50% increase, I think that's a little excessive personally, and I don't think price gouging is legal, so we have to look into that one. And so, if people don't pay their water bill because of the excessive rates, what is the city going to do? Oh, we're going to put a lien on the property. And how long does it take to recoup that money? You can't just go after the taxpayer, you have to do it all legally. So, I think you're kind of shooting yourself in the foot after all of this.
That's time.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, city managers report.
Nothing too much tonight, Mayor. Just want to thank McKenna and Matt for the Safe Streets presentation and the work they're doing on that, and then Matt for continued work on the sidewalk. Sean, as Councilmember Witt stated, great work at the FRC, such that it's something this community can be proud of and that Dearborn Heights is so eager to jump in with us to help us do that. And it's a great asset to the youth of our area now in Dearborn Heights as well. So, I just want to thank everyone who's working so hard for the city. That's all tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Nothing this evening.
Mayor Protam Dole?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Sean for all his hard work and effort for these young men and women. I wish we had something like this when I was younger. And as for the lady's comment about our city manager, he has been, I'll speak for myself, very open and honest, open-door policy. I can stop in there anytime. He's just straight-up guy, loves this city, cares about it, very educated. I can't say enough about him. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Mayor Protam Dole on both. Sean, great job over there, and you know I'm a champion for you, and as well as city manager, does a great job. And then, Mr. Miller, I love the idea of the sidewalk talk. It's something that I loved to do as a kid, and hopefully, you know, if it's something that people embrace, kids can go outside and maybe meet some new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember King? Also tonight. Councilmember Dole?
Well, you know, I got a couple of things. First off, I was asked to let everyone know the Rotary Club of Garden City is once again collecting their school supplies. So, there will be a collection box at Music in the Park on the 17th. And if I'm not mistaken, don't we put a box up at City Hall for them?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be a box here at City Hall, too. I want to thank all the community members that came out and helped us clean up Kiwanis Park. We had a miniature mountain of mulch that had to go down, but we had a lot of people show up and a lot of help, so it was, looks great now. As far as collecting on the unpaid water bills, I'm pretty sure if, I'm not going to repeat anything that I know in case I get it wrong, but if you want to give our city manager or even our city clerk call, they can explain to you how that works. It doesn't, from, it's my understanding, it really doesn't take us that long to get that money back from the county in the grand scheme of things. And last but not least, I wanted to extend my sympathies to Willby Pister's family. Willbe passed on July 4th, and he loved this city. He was a good guy, really, really enjoyed Willbe. So, his services are tomorrow from 3:00 to 8:00 at Santu's, and then funeral is 11:30 on Wednesday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carafotas?
I just had a couple of things. I think when our resident was up there talking, she wasn't talking about this city manager, she was talking about the previous city manager, about spending the money. I also want to ask about our master plan and when we are going to be working on that more. It's been two years now since I first asked about updating it. I think that's something that we need to start working on more. Do we have any updates on more stuff or coming soon?
Just as councilors, where we were awarded that grant, and it is continuing to diligently work towards the updates to the master plan that come with that grant.
Okay. The other thing I want to talk about is fireworks. So, we had a lot of residents that reached out to me this weekend that were just fed up with all the fireworks for their family members that didn't like them and for their dogs that didn't like them. I just wanted to remind everybody, that is a state law. We can't outlaw fireworks in Garden City. As an example, everybody said, well, we call the police and nothing gets done. We have four policemen that work on a shift, and about 8,000 people in Garden City decide to light off fireworks. So, it's about 30% of our population. Four policemen cannot cover 8,000 people. Most people think if they call in and say their neighbor is illegally lighting off fireworks too close to their house, the police can just come out and give a ticket. They cannot do that. The police actually have to see someone light off those fireworks. We all know by the time you call, that doesn't happen, they're already done doing it. So, I know it's very frustrating. If you want to change the firework laws in the state of Michigan, then you need to contact your state rep. It's not something that we can do as a city council. So, I just want to remind everybody that our police are out there trying, but trying to catch every person lighting off a firework, it's just impossible. You can be polite to your neighbors and let them know that you are going to be lighting them off. Ask them if there's someone in their family that doesn't really care for them, if they have issues with hearing the loud bang, if they have a dog that's super, you know, excitable after fireworks. You can also contact your veterinarian and ask for some medication that makes your dog a little bit calmer. There's those things that we can do until we can change the laws, but until then, it's not going to change much. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I just wanted to piggyback a little bit off of what you just said. There were, from the 3rd to the 6th, there were 253 total calls on fireworks and noise. Obviously, we couldn't get to them all, but we did issue violations. We issued warnings, obviously, if we don't see them, if the officer doesn't see them, they can't write a citation or a ticket. So, we were out, obviously, we couldn't get to all 253 calls at a quick enough time, but we were out there. I was assured by the chief that we added extra people. Still not enough. And again, to piggyback off Councilmember Carafotas, to change the law, we have to get to the state. It's not a city law that we can change. The state supersedes us. So, unfortunately, some people are impolite and, you know, they'll do it late at night, and by the time we can get there, they're usually done. So, hopefully, in the future, people will be more respectful and accommodating to their neighbors and just be smarter, common sense. I have nothing else. This meeting is adjourned.